Two thousand and twenty-five, six thirty P M at the city council chambers. First off, we're gonna start with the invocation and we have our lovely first Christian preacher, Brandon Mercer, gonna lay it down for us once again, please sir.
Our most gracious heavenly Father, we want to come forward here tonight and ask for wisdom for our city leaders. We ask for that you can guide this city council as they deliberate over the issues before them concerning our city. We ask for that you can empower them with your discernment, illuminate their judgments and plans with your insight, oh God. May this council steward their civic responsibility in such a way that one becomes an example for other cities to look up to and to follow with hopeful hearts, Lord, we want it. We seek your grace and judgment tonight, knowing that in you you lie of wisdom beyond our understanding. So, Lord, with all this done here tonight, Father God, let us reflect you and glorify you, and it's in your son, Jesus, we pray. Amen.
Amen.
From one veteran to another, sir, would you take the honor and lead us in the pledge of allegiance this go around?
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, and under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, sir. Okay, we're gonna go directly into public comments. For those that don't know, two months ago, we passed a set of rules, we've been in the city council, passed a set of rules. And what, you're gonna see me referring back to these rules two or three times during this so that we're all on the same page. So, before we start the public comments here, I'm gonna give just a few guidelines that we agreed to. Okay. It's imperative that the presiding officer maintains order at all times, officer must not permit debate or comments from any individual who's not been recognized. Interruptions must be silenced by voice, use of the gavel or other means. I don't, I don't like to use the gavel, I think it's kinda rude, so we'll just police ourselves and give you, you have a four-minute time limit and we're gonna give you every bit of that four minutes and after that, we'll just go to the next person. If it's not on the agenda, we cannot answer your question about it, you can just speak about it. So if you have an agenda item, we can, we can kinda discuss a little bit of that with you. So at this time, I have two, does anybody else have any, anybody else signed up other than these two? Anybody else wanna sign up before, other than these two? Okay, at this time, we will ask Katie Sherman. Item is not listed on the agenda, however, you're giving a report, correct?
Yeah, it's just my annual report that I needed to present to y'all.
Can we do it in four minutes?
Yeah.
I think that with it being a report from a department of the city, if you'd had to run over, it's, as far as I'm concerned, it's legal, so.
Okay, no, it shouldn't take more than four minutes, so.
Alright.
I just, I don't know what my December looks like, and so I decided I better make sure I come tonight and do this, just so that y'all have it for your information. First, I wanted to thank Amber for recording these meetings, I can't make a lot of them because I have kids that keep me busy, and so I do go back and watch them because y'all's business does sometimes contribute to the E D C since we are under y'all, so I do appreciate that. What I'm gonna present is just the things that we accomplished, the things we're working on in the future. So this is for all of our last fiscal year that ended in September. One of the big things we did was we had the S B D C U S D A grant that was here to help small businesses. And that guy, Dan Leslie, he still comes here appointment only. So if you, if y'all know anybody who would like to meet with him, he can help them with anything from starting a business to getting out of the business and anything in between. And it's all free and confidential. But if you know anybody who would like to get in contact with him, just let me know and I can get that information to them. Some other things that E D C did, we had the things we donated to this pastor. We helped with the Christmas decorations with the chamber, we donated to the Texas Country Air Rally. We donated to the Coway Trade Days. Something else, but I'm kinda jumping around, so I don't wanna take forever. Some big things we did, we helped hotly developed with their side, hot new side whenever they started their business on May, or on two eighty-seven. We, in July, the big thing is in July, we had Mr. John Matthews with Digital Carpenters come and present to us. He did a mini data mining center out of Benson now, and he's very interested in bringing something new here in Fana and we can find a space. I know that he made an offer to G P to lease their buildings, and they said they're not interested in leasing or selling in any sort of way. That has not deterred John, he is still looking and we're, you know, constantly looking at maps and seeing what's close to the substation for him. But he's really excited, he wants to come here, he wants to hire local and train local people to do these things. So if y'all hear anything or know anything, I'm constantly just sending you more ideas. In August, I did go through sales tax training workshop in Love it, I would say that is open to council members as well, if y'all ever feel like you could. It was, you know, a two hundred dollar price tag, but it was, goes very in-depth and it's very good informative training. As far as our board, our board, or my board, they, they're pretty on top of things. We have really sort of looking at our bylaws, we have started making sure that we're following them closely. We are, they decided they wanted to go through a board training, so we did a board training so that way they know when we're in meetings exactly what we're supposed to be doing. With that said, one of the things that we won't be doing as much, but coming in the future, we'll be donating to one day events because even though that does bring in economic development, that's not what the E D C is here for. I'm not saying we won't always do it, but it won't be just a nickel and dime in here and there. When I looked at it, this past year between all the different events we donated to was about eight thousand dollars. And that could go a long ways in helping our small businesses versus each, each event. Thank y'all.
Thank you, Katie.
I'm sorry for the interruption, I thought we had a, maybe had a problem there, but we don't, just me being silly. So, what's that? Okay. Clear. Alright, the next one we have is Mr. Steven Sparkman, and he will be speaking about an item on the agenda, item number nine. You have four minutes, sir, when you're ready.
Okay, good evening, I'd like to address the city council this evening and prequel to our agenda number nine. I have purchased a property at eleven oh eight West Third, formerly known as The Russians House. And it is a tiny home, four hundred and fifty square feet or so. I have, I would like to add two more crook quarters there. And my problem is one lot is multi-family, one lot is single. I've combined lots, I need a variance on my code enforcement so that I can make it multi, multi-home basically. On the, cause I want the single lot to have two and the double lot to have one, basically. The tiny homes are gonna be used for my employees, I'm not chasing the solar farms or the wind farms, it's just my guys that already work for me. Need a place to live, to drive trucks, need a place to hang out on weekends, wash clothes, get out of the truck. We've, we showed the location to all of y'all, I think Johnson Curtis was out of town, but David's been and I think everybody else has been or had the opportunity to go. My, my question is, could I get a, could y'all grant me a variance on the code so I can have my little tiny home community for my employees? Thank you, if you have any questions, I'm, I'm all ears.
I will get to, if we got any questions, I'll get to you, thank you. Okay, well, that looks like that was all.
Where did you sign up to get on with it, I thought I signed something?
I just gave you a paper that it heard.
I am so sorry, I wasn't trying to, no ma'am, Ms. Dickens, I apologize, you are on deck next, I'm so sorry. Was it an agenda item or?
Well, I, we had talked about it before at the city meeting over at the building about.
Yes, ma'am.
A historical mark for Macedonia.
Go ahead.
We're doing a hundred and five years this coming Sunday.
Yes, ma'am.
And we talked about getting one also for the Douglas over there, but I'm not so concerned about it until we get the building torn down.
Yes, ma'am.
And we had also talked about people coming out there dumping.
Yes, ma'am.
And it was made, basically was in the county, but I noticed just yesterday that it is in the city over on Nelson and Houston. And I don't know who's responsible to get that stopped, but they said they want people to move back in here. And a lot of people from here own land over there, and they're just dumping on these people's land.
Yes, ma'am.
If they decided to move back, they'd have to clear it off more than they have, and I just wonder who we get to see to get that stopped? And why, why are they doing that?
Well, I wish I had a good answer as to why they're doing that, but we will address it and can we reach out to her to answer that question and get all that?
We, we'll pick up whatever trash is over there now.
Well, you got a lot to do because some of the roads are closed up so with trash that you can't even get down, you don't even know that there's streets anymore.
We will take care of it.
So you got that one, okay, alright, well, thank you. Okay, at this time, we're gonna go to line item number two, which is consider and approve the minutes of the regular meeting of September the twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-five, September the thirtieth, twenty twenty-five, and the regular meeting of October the fourteenth.
Look, we approved minutes.
The motion was made by Mr. Jackson, can I get a second, second by Lisa?
We have proven all the minutes on one night.
Make sure she's got this.
Yes.
Okay, the question was, are we proving it all of them at one time?
Yes.
The answer is, yes, we are.
Yes.
So, the motion was made, I have a second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Eyes carried it? Okay, we're gonna go on to item number three, consider approve the payment of bills received from October the fourteenth, two thousand and twenty-five through November the tenth of two thousand and twenty-five.
Look, we approve the bills be paid from October fourteenth through November.
Item was. The motion was made by Mr. Jackson, can I get a second? Ms. O'Neil, seconded, all in favor, say aye.
I have some discussion first. It's my understanding that we were gonna have aged receivable, I mean aged accounts payable and a reconciled balance. I think those things are necessary to decide, because we don't even have a list of what the bills are that we're being asked to approve.
There are no aged bills, we're current on every bill we have except one, and that's one payment to the cemetery. All the rest of the bills are current.
What about, what about the ones that you're asking us to approve now, what, can we, can we get a copy of those?
I can get you one, I don't have it with me.
This is a problem I had before with the previous administrations, we're being asked to approve payment of bills and we don't even know what those bills are. And that's, that's why I have an issue with it, because I would like to have a copy of those bills, so these are what we're being asked to approve, then I can read them.
I can get you the bills to approve before we ever write the checks, if that's what you want.
That's what I want.
Pardon me, in the minutes, somewhere, it does, I thought I read over you over these minutes and it did say that that was gonna be provided. I might be mistaken.
What's this right here in front?
That was on October fourteenth, line item number eight.
I don't have a copy of that.
I don't either. I don't have any bills.
Well, the motion was made and was seconded, so we're gonna go ahead, if there's no more debate or discussion, we'll go ahead and, and, and we're gonna let it die and come back with what you're requesting?
And I would suggest that, you know, it's important to pay them on a timely fashion, but when that is ready, then we, that you might call an emergency session first to take the action. We didn't wait for a whole month.
Can I say something?
That's a twenty-five dollars every time I do that, forty-five, twenty-five, twenty-five, twenty-five.
Can I say something? The setup that the city has is that we give the manager the money to pay the bills, he pays the bills and the bills are paid. We're only approving what has already been paid, they're already paid, we're not approving, you know, to pay them, they're already paid.
But what are we approving then, the fact that they've?
The fact that they've already been paid. If we want to approve them beforehand, we need to change the rules to do that.
But I don't think the question is, we're not asking to see the bills beforehand, we just wanna know what was paid. We're not, we're not questioning whether they were paid or not, we'll approve the payments, but we kinda need to have some oversight and see where the money's going.
We can't do our due diligence in managing the city.
I know it gets a little murky, but.
We don't know who we're paying, whether they're, it's just, I never heard that being done.
Well, you've never served in a government before. The school does, county does, city does, and they're all.
It's just the weather, though.
So, we're gonna go ahead.
Then we need to change the way we budget?
Yeah.
Our budget system is.
Then you're saying these, these bills have been paid in accordance with the budget?
Yes.
And how do we know that?
Because we haven't amended the budget.
How do we know they are if we haven't, if we haven't done due diligence? And how much they are?
Do you have a copy of that, what's that, what's it?
And looking at something that was.
I didn't know if I just didn't get it or?
Nine one, nine sixteen, I've got.
It used to be in our packets, but they're, I don't have these.
I've got a nine ten, I've got a nine sixteen.
I'll get a printout of all the bills that were paid between October the fourteenth or whatever that is there.
So.
You know, I'm just proud that we can sit here and say that we are current on our bills and not six months behind.
Yes, sir, absolutely.
Like it were a few months ago.
Absolutely. So the motion was made, it was seconded, if we're gonna change the way that we do it, then we're gonna have to put that on an agenda and pass it. Now, this doesn't have to pass, I'm, that's what I'm saying, I'm just saying the motion was made, it's already on the table, the motion was made to accept it, it was seconded, so we're gonna call for a vote at this time if there's no more debate.
Well, I, I still, I have one question, is, is we, in the minutes we just passed, is that we would get a copy of the aged receivers, okay? Now, to me, that means, I mean aged payables, to me, that means all of the payables. These are zero to thirty, these are thirty, there are no zero thirty to sixty. The zero thirty, you know.
Can you, I can get it, yeah. Can you just make sure that the city secretary puts that into? I will. Does that satisfy that portion?
Yeah, I just wanna see what, what, what we're paying. You know, and we're paying, I'm glad that we are current and I commend you for doing that. But I would like to know what's going on in our city by looking at what's being paid.
She gives me a daily report on the checks that were written for that day, and I can put it together with the bills that they match. What I get does not say to Joe Ponceoff or wherever, it's just the amount and, and the balance at the end of the day.
Lisa?
It was item number eight of last, last month's meeting. Requiring the city administrator to provide the council at its regular monthly meetings with a comprehensive financial report to include aged accounts payable, aged accounts received before reconciled eight balances on all accounts as of previous month, all prepared in accordance with G A and P. Debbie Voley, Debbie Brown voted to approve requiring the city administrator to provide full and comprehensive financial report at the monthly city council meetings. Motion was seconded by Bill Jones and the vote was unanimous in approval of it.
I didn't do it this time, but I'll get it next time.
Well, the vote's on the table, we, we can, we can pass it or we can come back to it. So the vote is on the table, that we accept it the way that it is and go ahead and pass it. It was made by Mr. Jackson, seconded by Ms. O'Neil, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
I'm sorry, one, two, three, four, five?
I abstain.
You can't abstain.
I don't know them.
Okay, we ain't got to the nose yet, I gotta make a count here, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
It looks like four, four ayes, opposed?
Aye.
One no, I'm missing an aye. Five ayes, one no. Okay, at this time, we're gonna move to the council department reports, per our rules, and I don't need to read it verbatim. This is, this is just for your report. We're not gonna go off into a different, if it's not your area, this is not the line item for it. So we're gonna start, we're just going in order with, Shane, would you please start?
Part of the fire department, there's not much of a report, we did have a house fire. There was pictures in the papers, some of y'all may have seen it. The individual living there did lose the whole home, it was total loss. That's all I got for the fire department.
City ordinances, I don't have any update, we're gonna work on going through them, I think we gotta take it re-written.
He has been working them all, it's his own, so, anything, okay. Mr. Jones?
On the airport, we are up and running, we've got fuel, we started off with fifteen hundred gallons of fuel being delivered to us last month, used two hundred gallons. And, and we have adjusted the price from five dollars, which is what it was, down to four dollars and fifty cents. The purchase is a cost of three dollars and eighty-seven cents, that means with those two hundred gallons, we have made a gross profit of twenty-six percent. And on that, and we have, we have, I think I have the item, I have the number here, that equates out to about, I think a hundred and fifty dollars of profit out of that money that we, it's the gross profit, we don't have, we don't know what the expenses were, like the electricity in the airport. But they should be minimal, so, so our net profit, there should be a net profit on that. And that, and that means that we're recovering, I know I didn't do the calculations and based on that, so we're recovering from selling that and I'd like to commend it, it's been, the department deposited that money coming from its credit card is now going directly into the account, so wanna thank you for making that happen. And the, the, I said, the amount of, it will be sufficient, if, if we continue at this rate at the end of the year, we should have sufficient money made off of it that we can purchase either five hundred more gallons or start spending city back, whatever they decide, whatever they decide.
Okay.
On the trash, we are still in the same up that we have, we have not, not gotten access to the, to the security cameras to see if, if there's been exit, what's going on with the amount of trash we're receiving and what we're sending out, we're still sending out more trash than we're, than we're, than we're bringing in. And we're still being paid, about half will be, we are receiving through our revenue about half of what was about per million, I work, per yard. We need to raise the rates that we charge by a factor of two to do that, and even after we raise the factor of two, we still have, we have four, we have four roll-offs going off for every roll-off that we bring revenue in, so that means we're, we're not accounting for all the material brought in and that, that, the, that would be shown through the security cameras, because we've got a good record of, of the permits that are issued and what we're getting money for and what there are, but we know that what we're charging is, is half what it would be if those, those containers were full.
I don't know how they're getting in there. You know, it's locked at night and it's not open until we're there, so I don't know how to put stuff out.
Well, I think if you wanna be realistic on that, trying to increase prices two times or whatever, you're going to compound your problem you're having with people driving down the.
Thank you.
By the rubber tracks.
It's happening everywhere all over the county, so.
On the west side, people take it over there and just dump it because they flat cannot afford the fees that we're trying to charge for trash. We're gonna have to look around, put our heads together, and we're gonna have to come up with a realistic, affordable means for everybody to be able to utilize those services or we're gonna see our trash problem explode worse than what it is.
If I get.
I, I've, I've thought about that too, and go ahead.
What are, when is the gate open?
It's open now on Saturday mornings from eight.
It's not open during the day, they gotta come in here to the hall and get, I think that's part of the problem, I really do, I think people don't want to deal with it. They're just saying, oh, well, I'm gonna go put my trash cover on. And if there's nobody sitting at the city barn, they get away with a part-time person sitting down there to manage that.
We, I brought that up in the last meeting, it was during the summer, we had a, a full-time person out there and, and he was costing us more, him settling, costing us more per, per month than we were receiving in revenue.
Not if you look at the, not if you look at the compounded problem with the money and expenses it's gonna take to clean up the mess all over the down where they're dumping.
That is correct, okay, I'm not arguing that, I'm just saying.
But he was on a grant, wasn't he?
And we were, and we were only getting an average of three permit applications per day going in.
Well, we're gonna have to put this on the agenda items, so. Would you write down on the, would you write down for our column meeting, I know that, I know that's horrible, lady.
No, I'm, I'm okay.
Yeah, this is just government.
I will throw something out, just to get it on the table, is that, is that we have a landfill that we're permitted for. And we were one time allowed to put materials in there, other than now, we're only allowed to put in our, the city-owned buildings that we've demolished, put that material in there. Over half, more, more than half, and maybe even three-fourths of the material we're accepting and sending off would be acceptable to the permit, if the permit was allowed to put it in that landfill, we wouldn't have to pay shipping, you know.
But that's been the question before, why, of why we didn't explore the opportunity of reopening the landfill.
I think we ought to.
Can you research that, we'll have that on the next.
I'd be glad to do that.
Appreciate it. Ms. O'Neil?
Okay, at the cemetery, I know Darren said to tell the city guys, thanks for filling in the puddles and stuff. But other than that, it, it's good at the cemetery, everything's good. City park, everything is good, our people have finished our, the wall and everything, the friends of the park, it looks really good, and everything else is good.
Mr. Jackson?
We had several water leaks, thankful the guys have gotten out and repaired them, as far as I know. We're still not taking care of it out here on the north side of town. They patched a few holes around town in the streets, and I've got a list that I wanna give Mr. Wilson of streetlights.
Oh, okay.
Thirty-one that are out, down two eighty-seven, Main and Third Street.
Awesome.
And I'll get you a list of the other three or four hundred there.
Awesome. I, I do have one, one deal for you, if you, if you're done, I didn't mean to cut you off. I got a phone number from the senator yester, yesterday, Senator Perry, I got a phone number for him. I would like for you and Mr. Wilson to sit down and call us on the water, how we get on that program. And then on the backside of that one, what day is that guy gonna be here for the special meeting? Eighteenth, the eighteenth of November.
Yeah, ten o'clock.
Eighteenth of November at ten A M.
Yep.
We will call a special meeting. For that, eighteen November at ten A M, we'll have you taken care of. Alright. That's all you have?
That's all I have.
Well, I dropped the ball on the E D C and I'd like to thank, well, I do think I'm perfect, but hell, she proved it, I'm not perfect. And I did make a mistake on the, on getting your items on the agenda, but during this special thing, we will make sure that you're taken care of. And I apologize to you and everybody affected by it, it was pretty, pretty bad ball drop, I fumbled on the, on the, on the goal line and somebody else could've scored with it, but we stopped them, so.
Actually, we November eighteen?
Yes, okay.
Okay, I met with Eddie at the sewer in, just briefly discussed with him some of the things, most of the, most of the, I mean, sewer plant's going well, but he, you know, the equipment is defunct and just those kinda things that, that need to, I went out to visit with him some more in depth with it about today, but I didn't catch him. So I'll visit with him some more before next meeting and we'll get, maybe we can get some items that he, you know, even if it's small things, small steps, getting taken care of out there, as far as the buildings, we're, we're in a tension with some cleaning because I'm tired of cleaning the ballroom and sometimes I don't know that it's running and I drop it off, but anyway, that's getting taken care of. And we have a new proposal for locks and stuff that I'll need to give you, Mr. Wilson, I'll, I'll get with you on that. And also, I am working on a list of things, checklist. And also, I am working on a list of things, checklist for whenever they rip the buildings, what needs to be done. Um, air conditioner, lights, um, cleaning, the things that need to be done. After we get them deep cleaned and taken care of, then every time somebody, somebody rins it, if they do their job whenever they leave and to get their deposit back, it should not need to be a large cleaning fee every, every month. That's it.
What, what about the skid steer, what's going on with that?
We gotta check back, 'cause I have in the report here, we, they paid us seventeen thousand dollars on the skid steer. There was no way that they could come up with, and I could come up with, to get a, an estimate of what one like that would cost now. So, they took the low end of the, of the spectrum, there's like one with no bells and whistles and one with a whole bunch of bells and whistles, and they took the low end, which added us seventeen thousand dollars.
And the plans for replacing a written one, too?
We.
We need to work on it.
Yeah, I have an idea, let's, let's hit after that, uh, we might be able to cover that.
Yeah, I, I've, I've got an idea too.
We'll hit on that. Okay, at this time, we are going to move on to old business out of, uh, it's five A. Considering approved the Centrio contract, I passed one out to all of y'all. I'm gonna give y'all some time to look over this, and I'll just kinda, I'll tell you what, what they explained it to us. Friday?
Yeah, Friday.
We met with them, it would've been the second meeting that Mr. Wilson and I had with them. The first meeting was basically asking us what, what we felt like they needed. And then they told us what they felt like they could do. I don't believe that either one of us thought that was as much as we thought they could do. So, they went back to the drawing board and they presented this proposal with us here, which basically raises it to nine hundred dollars a month. Um.
And then bill with us four hundred and twenty-five dollars a month for internet access.
Because of the, this is the way he explained it to me, and if I'm wrong, correct me on this, when it was not Centrio and it was. Santa Rosa, Santa Rosa could give free internet. Centrio cannot, it's against their policy, put something on the books that's free. Um, so, they cannot give us free internet, but what they did do is they took all the internet we had, took the lowest one, which was a hundred and forty-five a month, I think. Made them all out to be a hun, be the same price. Now, we do not have to accept this, we don't have to take it, it's up to you, but if we do not take this, the nine hundred dollars a month is going away, and they, they already have another water tower within the city limits, and they're moving all this stuff too, so.
Okay, I talked to Dusty today, and he said that they won't be able to put it out there because he has not, they have not contacted him or anything.
They told us they had.
Well, Dusty's the one that's. Cause Dusty, I talked to him earlier, and he said they have not contacted him.
Yeah, called our book.
Yep. So, what would the process be to put out a request for a proposal to have another internet company come in here and see what they can do? There's other ones out there?
I think that's the way to go.
I think the only thing we can do is wait till we get an attorney to tell us what we can do with our old contract, and we sure can't sign this new one without with that old one open like it is, and then we wanna spare four hundred thousand bucks.
Yeah, I don't, I don't like the idea, is we signed a contract with them before, and they have an honor back contract, and now they wanna give us another contract, they did honor the first one, I, I don't see why.
And it relieves them of any liability of the first.
That's right.
I don't say we can't do anything.
I think we need to get an attorney, is what we need to do.
Absolutely.
So, that's, we're gonna go and table that again, the Centrio contract, oh. I understand that we're tabling, and the part I, I forgot to tell you was, they're gonna give us three computers. And they would be our, uh, I.T. people, and they would make sure that every program that we had that was on the internet was in compliance with the, the state's new regulations. And there would be a contact number where if you wanted to hook up a printer and you couldn't hook up a printer, then you, you would call this contact number and they would come through the internet and hook it up. So, that was all part of the package.
But then when you get to page four, under excluded services, it says Centrio will make every effort to support hardware and business software utilized on client's network. Centrio, if they determine support of specific systems require unusually excessive and or ongoing support, they will recommend potential solutions to client to resolve issues. Examples include replacing problematic hardware, increasing the average agreement pricing, or deeming support of a specific business application as out of scope for the active S.O.W. So, any, any changes that happens to the existing software, if they do an upgrade and Centrio's pro- product is not compatible, they're gonna come back and charge us, and we're gonna have to execute a new statement of work in order to get it in compliance.
And they're gonna increase the price.
And he still was fine.
All right.
And the other thing is.
At the point of where this item was, was tabled before?
It's been tabled multiple times.
Then it needs, there needs to be a motion to bring it from the table, if we're gonna re-table it, then it needs to be a motion to put it back on the table.
Okay.
In, in order to discuss it, in order to discuss it at all, it, there has to be a motion to bring it from the table.
Okay.
So, um, but we've already, here, here on out, that's how we need to handle it.
Okay.
I'd just like to put on the table that, that Microsoft has said they're going to.
Too much tabled in the law.
So, I don't like to be tabled.
So, I make a motion that the Centrio contract be tabled until we can find an attorney, we get an attorney who can give us what our options truly are, based on the old contract versus the new one.
And does that cover all the bases that y'all want covered?
No, that, that means it comes up on the next meeting, whether we have an attorney or not, we, we have to come up before the next meeting. Our new rule is made that anything that's tabled comes before the next meeting.
Just, you just let it die for the lack of a second.
That's, I think it should not.
Let it die, man.
Yeah, okay, so we'll call for it, and we'll go through, so. Can I get a motion to bring this Centrio contract back to the table? No motion at this time? It's dead? Now, I do not believe that item number B is under old business, I believe that that is new business, unless y'all know, you remember something that I don't. So, can we, can somebody remember why that would be under old business? We did talk about it, but we didn't have a policy or anything like that.
No, we didn't, we didn't make any decisions.
It was just a motion to, uh, do it, to do it.
Okay, so at this time, I guess we could, we could, since the new policy or the, the, we could go ahead with the policy since we made the motion to do it, and we have the rules, we can vote on the rules under old business now. So, if you will go to five B. You will see. The proposed, uh. The proposed. Oh, it's gonna, what it's gonna be called? Grant Writing Committee Policy. Uh, the pros of this will, uh, increase access to funding, improve grant success rates, encourage strategic planning, promote, uh, collaboration and transparency. Reduce reliance on local revenues, build civic capacity, enhances community development, establish long-term funding pipelines, and strengthen our city's reputation. Now, with that behind there, we actually have the policy, or the proposed policy of how it was gonna go, I'll let y'all, have y'all had time to read over that, you need a second to, to see it. I would, I would ask you to look at section three under membership where it says, the Grant Writing Committee shall consist of the following members. Two city council representatives, and it is appointed by mayor, if you have a problem with that, if you would like to do it a different way, now's our chance to amend it. But it, the way I saw it, it was just like appointing to these, you know, over the water or whatever, so. Then it has one city park for ex-volunteer and up to four citizen members with experience or interest in grants. So. And it would, the reason, I'll go ahead and explain this, um, the reason why section seven prohibited areas, which we all know is the most important, water, sewer, and street repair without the city administrator. Uh, and the companies that do this, we can get them to more trouble than we can do good. Basically, if we go out and get accepted for a grant that we have to have seventy-eight million dollars for, and we can't. We can't back it up, therefore, we're gonna lose that, and we'll lose the opportunity to apply for other ones in that deal. That's the only reason that, that, that is in there, however, with his permission, uh, or not without his permission, with, with our governance, that's when we get, like, the man that's coming for the water, the senator's guy and all that stuff out there, so. And then, of course, uh, section nine sunset and review, this policy shall be reviewed annually by the city administrator, with recommended changes, uh, submitted to the city council for approval, so, has everybody had a chance to look over it? Do we have any debate, any questions?
Did I miss anything about, uh, they need approval that requires matching funds?
That, that's automatic. Doesn't say that, but.
He's the, he is the over, he approves everything, they, Grant Writing Committee makes them, they come through him for final approval.
And we won't, we won't bring any, anything without, that has matching funds without y'all's approval.
Absolutely. Any more questions at this time, debate items?
I'm moving, we approve the Grant Writing Committee Policy.
Mr. Jackson made the, uh, motion, can I get a second? Mr. Brown, oh, seconded, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Eyes carried? Okay, item number C, so, correct me if I'm wrong, I have to ma, we have to make a motion to bring this back, is that how you said it, Lisa?
It was tabled, you have to have a motion to bring it back.
I believe this was tabled, was it not, for computers? Okay, so at this time, can I get a motion to bring purchase of new, of, of new computers onto? The floor? Motion was made and seconded, you got the, okay? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? At this time, we'll be pulling her out of the closet, putting her back on the table. Um. Five C, we shouldn't, we have documentation for five C. So, this is, uh, this is Dale Technologies, I believe?
Yes.
So, it looks like we're trying to purchase four computers, correct me if I'm wrong, and four keyboards.
Four keyboards, yes.
So, the subtotal of the computers is five thousand sixty-three dollars and fifty-six cents, add an additional one hundred and fifty dollars and seventy-two cents. Um, before we bring this on the, on the table, I, I need to remind y'all that we have fifty thousand dollars that we have got to spend by December the. Yeah, I thought it was in the middle.
It's dead money.
Is it, so it's the last for the COVID money?
I thought it was.
Okay, well, we'll double check that.
Say you got seventy-six thousand five hundred and fifty dollars.
So, what we could do. Is use that COVID money to pay for these computers. And then they would have to code it a certain way that it, you know, it would have to be.
What, what was the bid from that other company?
Ned Centrio.
It's the one I've got so far, that I found.
We had the one that we tabled from Ned Centrio.
Yeah, we had a proposal from him, but we got the proposal from Centrio.
Yeah, I think there are services in our.
But it's.
Yeah.
But also had to press the computers, too.
I gave you that, Mr. Wilson, one time at a meeting, I don't know. I don't know.
She might get a lot.
The one I had.
Yeah.
She could be, she might be marching over. To, the two were fairly close together.
Yeah, Centrio, it was ten thousand for both.
This is about half of five, yeah. Is this, is this, are these, uh, laptop, I mean laptops or the towers or what?
They're desktops.
Dell Pro Slims, two C's.
Laptop, yes. Well, they'll be, they'll be dead.
They're desktops.
Yeah, they're not, they're not gonna be laptops.
So, I mean.
What kind of storage do they have? So, that, let me see what that.
Thirty-two gigs.
Nine hundred.
Five hundred.
Nine hundred, five hundred, five hundred twelve. Five hundred twelve, you did right.
What kind of software do they run?
It's got, they've got Windows eleven. Doesn't say anything on here about, uh. No integrated graphics, we're not worried about that so much, but what about?
Is it water and, that they're on all their software's compatible?
Is it gonna be compatible?
It should be, yeah, with this, with this, this high power.
Okay, what about, um, you're gonna have to purchase the Microsoft suite on that, because there's certain components.
I'll have to check, I'll have to check.
Well, it says Windows eleven Pro.
Windows is just the operating system, Microsoft is software, so you'll have to buy it separate. And that's gonna run you three hundred and sixty dollars a year.
If it's not, if it's not TikTok, Facebook, or, uh.
Instagram?
Yeah, I probably don't know much about it.
But for business, you can probably, you can get business solutions from Microsoft at, at different prices, you just have to check into them.
Honestly, this is why we need an I.T. person. I'm not a computer, I'm a brilliant, I can't turn my phone on or be on and off.
Yeah.
Just don't shut it off and keep it on charger.
That's what I've been doing, that's what I've been doing.
That's what I do with mine, stay on the person. I think that's a good point here.
We need an I.T. person to do it.
I think we need to table it, but we get the I.T. guy hired and, and bring him in to, to, I think this, I think this is a good recommendation, you know, but, but, you know, we have some security, we need to have backup storage for, to, that's compatible with, with the new, you know, the new security systems to, so.
So, at this time.
I think.
If we let it, um.
Just, you just don't have to let it die.
Well, we don't have to, because if we.
We'll run it back to the table.
Table it until the next meeting, so.
I move we table it till the next meeting.
Move was made to table it?
I second.
Seconded, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Eyes carried it, so table. All right, at this time, we're gonna move on to the burn permit, which is.
Before you get too far along, you know, the county instituted a burn ban for the entire county.
Yes.
Yesterday.
Merchant County.
Yes. So. If we pass it, it will be on, it will be a policy when the burn ban comes out, we can still charge the permits, correct?
You're gonna have to, you're gonna have to rescind that one.
Well, passing this new one would rescind it, would it not?
Well, it would, yes, but you need to, in your wording, you need to say that it rescinded.
Okay, so the motion, when the motion's made, okay. So, the city, so the, the city council acts, I, I, I'm gonna refer back to the rules so we're all on the same page here. The city council acts in one or two methods, it may adopt a resolution or an ordinance. A resolution is an expression of the will of the council. The resolution may be written to honor some person, to recognize an event, to ask the city administration to look into a matter, perform a task, execute a contract, or fulfill some other desire of the council. An ordinance is a law or regulation. The council adopts an ordinance to set traffic regulations, establish zoning or land use regulations, to set tax rates, et cetera. Both ordinances and resolutions require the presentation of the items on the agenda, a motion, a second, and a motion, and the affirmative vote of at least four council members. Uh. Let's see. City council meetings are for the city council to conduct business while audience members are generally allowed to listen, observe, and sometimes participate. The emphasis of the city council meeting is right through the city council and not the public. So, at this time, we will move to consider and approve the burn permit order, uh, is item number six in your packet here. And. the reason this was considered, the pros of fire department issued burn ban permit ordinance. It will enhance public safety, improve emergency response preparedness, encourage safe burning practices, creates accountability, generates revenue for file, fire services. Permit fees from twenty-five to a hundred dollars can provide funds that help offset department costs like equipment, training, or public education initiatives. Uh, discourage illegal burning because I believe the fines are two hundred up to a thousand. Uh, streamlines regulation enforcement, aligns with environmental and air quality policies, and supports community awareness. Uh, so basically, in this policy, it just says that, um, it gives you the definitions, open burning, burn pit, and application. Uh, it says that the fire captain or the city aquana or the, the chief's designated representative are the ones that, that approve it. Um, and basically, no person shall conduct open burning within the city aquana without first obtaining a burn permit issued by the city aquana fire department. All applications for burn payment, permits shall be reviewed and approved or denied based on the assessment of fire risk, current weather conditions, burn location, and compliance with city and state fire safety standards. The fire chief or designee shall have the authority to suspend, revoke, or deny any burning permit if burning conditions are deemed unsafe. So then it goes on to, you just basically split out how it works, so. If y'all have, I'll give y'all a chance to read through it if you haven't done it yet.
I think we should table this until we get the county takes us out of a burn ban. I think it's gonna fog. The water's already murky and we put this on top of the county and they think they can come get a permit, burn in the city, and then they're violating the county, I think we're, I think we're.
Okay, all right.
Right now, there's a burn ban in place, nobody can burn anywhere, so it is.
Once, if we're out of a burn ban by the county, I think we can revisit it, but right now, I think we're.
Okay.
That's where we're.
All right.
I'm moving we table it.
Okay, now, if we table it, we want to bring it up next meeting. Table it or we're gonna.
Between now and then, we can.
Okay.
I don't have my heaven bringing it back.
Okay, I just wanna make sure, I just wanna make sure that we're all over, okay. So the motion, the motion was made to table the burn ban permit, uh, can I get a second?
Second.
We have a second? All in favor of the table, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes have it? All right, at this time. There we go. At this time. We'll go to, uh, item number seven, consider approve terminating our contract with Texas Communities Group LLC as our code enforcement, substandard structures and tax property sales manager, or to renew the contract. The contract is set to renew on November the thirteenth of twenty twenty-five.
I move we terminate the contract with Texas Communities Group LLC.
I second.
So the motion was made with a second to terminate the contract.
I, I, I just got a question.
Okay.
David, if I understand correctly, you have the authority to do COVID for that, correct?
Yes.
Yeah, it, it, that's what I was gonna ask, who's, who's.
Who's what now?
Uh, who's watching out for everything that's going on, that you've been doing a good job of it, so.
They did, they did.
Yeah.
All right. So motion, motion's made, seconded. All in favor of, of terminating the contract with Texas Communities Group LLC as our code enforcement, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes have it? Okay, line item eight. It's fourteen, uh, no, I'm sorry, it's eight in the book, please forgive me. Now, this falls under the same rules I read about the enforcement. I don't need to reread it, I think we all almost are still on the same page with that. In fact, the next three fall under that. Two fall under that, I apologize. So, uh, consider and approve the ATV, UTV golf cart ordinance, if you'll spill it at number eight within the book. So I had multiple residents come to me, most of those were senior citizens that have limited mobility and they do not like the high price of fuel. It's hard for them to get in and out of the car, um, anyway, and they brought this and asked if we would bring it back in front of the council. After talking to several people, I've talked to younger people, I've talked to older people, I've talked to anybody that, 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 that had an idea about it. And I have one expert in the audience out here, if we have questions, we'll call on him out there, but right now, um, basically, the pros for passing the ATV, UTV, and golf cart ordinance, uh, improve mobility and access, uh, economic development, attract tourism, rev, revenue, especially if the city is near recreational areas that appeal to off-road vehicle users, environmental benefits, reduce traffic congestion, increase community engagement, and revenue from fees slash penalties. So if you'll take a turn and look at the ordinance, I'll give you a chance to look through that. Basically, there is a sticker, um, that you purchase through the Texas Wildlife Department. That would be required, and then you would re, the city would also have a certificate. Mr. Wilson has the little, little.
Stamp.
Stamp. That would be stamped and we would clear coat it with, uh, plastic, whatever we had to do. The driver would carry that around on their person. Um, they have to be licensed drivers, you know, you're not gonna be kids, not.
That, that will be the biggest issue right there, is kids.
Yeah, already is an issue.
Yeah.
Yeah, they're everywhere.
Yeah, so basically, the authorized, the authorized operation of it is allowed on public streets with a posted speed limit of thirty-five miles an hour or less. Vehicles may cross state highways and intersections when perpendicular to the highway and only when safe to do so. Uh, operations berated between sunrise and sunset unless the vehicle is equipped with operational headlights and taillights. Vehicles may not operate on sidewalks, parked property, or unapproved right-of-way areas.
You said that, that, the permits have to be purchased through the Texas Parks and Wildlife, does that mean they have to go to the state park and get them?
No, you can get them right off the internet.
So.
Yeah, well, you can, you can go to the state park and get them as well, but you, if, if, if it was an elderly person that was having a hard time to get one, that she can go, that he or she can go on this, on the state park and wildlife's deal. Six dot, how much?
Seventeen.
Seventeen dollars. It's, it, and this is gonna be a yearly deal, so it's just like a hunting license. If you, if we pass this, January the first, they'll buy it, and it's good to January the first. But if you have a hunting license, or not a hunting license, if you buy an ATV car and you're in the middle of the year, where you're still gonna pay the sixty dollars, but you're only gonna get six months worth of, so.
Okay, section four authorized, uh, operation, cannot operate on sidewalks. If they're parked property, now, if they're taking them down to the city park, it's got authorized roadways, or it was gonna say they can't drive down there?
They can ride on the authorized road.
They can stay on the road, but they cannot be driving on the, on the landscape.
Say it again, section four, what?
Just verify section four. Uh, vehicles may not operate on sidewalks, parked properties are unapproved right-of-way. That parked property need to, need to say, needs to be limited to, uh.
Section three, number four.
Oh, section three, number four.
Yeah.
Okay.
So like the city park has areas, roads.
Unapproved, unapproved right-of-way areas, would that not cover it? I'm just asking. Yeah, right or?
Maybe.
Vehicles may not operate on sidewalks, parked property, or unapproved right-of-way areas, so.
Yeah.
That would cover the.
The street would be the only authorized right-of-way, yeah.
Right, that's what I'm saying, is the, the city park has roads you can drive down in there, or we're gonna tell these people they can't take their golf carts and they can't be.
They can take them on the right-of-way where the carts go, yeah.
Right, okay.
But they can't drive out on the grass.
No.
What you're saying?
Okay, so is, are we happy with the wording on that? All right, any more debate, questions, thoughts?
How many we approved the ordinance?
I second.
The motion was made and seconded. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes carried it? Okay, at this time, we're gonna go on to line number nine, consider and approve Steven Sparkman's variance for crew quarters. The reason it says Steven Sparkman in there was because of me. I was, I did, I should've put a, a address in there, or a block, or a deal, but.
Eleven oh one west third.
Eleven oh one west third.
Eleven oh eight.
Eleven oh eight.
Eleven oh eight west third. We're gonna go ahead with the Steven Sparkman, but we're gonna add eleven oh eight west third, so consider and approve Steven Sparkman, eleven oh eight west third, variance for crew quarters. And you, Mr. Wilson, as the city administrator, was that a recommendation?
Yes, it is.
That you had, okay. So at this time, can we get a motion to approve?
I make the motion that we approve the crew quarters at eleven oh eight west third.
Okay, wait, are we gonna even talk to the people who was at the zoning board?
Well, the zoning board's not here, that zoning.
He's right back there, Stanley.
Oh, yeah, yeah, he'd come in. Anyways, zoning board voted two to one to approve it. That was their recommendation to.
But I thought we were supposed to still hear the zoning board's recommendations.
You are. I did not see Stanley come in.
What you got, Stanley?
Oh, I, I, I was two that voted for it and one that voted against it. I thought Mr. Reynolds was gonna be here. That's all, I voted against it because that's what the handbook says, uh, only one dwelling per lot. I thought Reynolds was gonna be here, he's the chairman, I thought he was gonna talk, so.
He told me he would be, but.
What does the handbook say?
I'm sorry.
What does the handbook say?
The handbook says that, that only one dwelling shall be on per lot in the zoning order.
Have you been out there and look at it? Okay, here's how, here's, here's the. So the, the Russian house.
I, I didn't.
And here's a driveway, and this, here's another one of the quarters, okay, this is quarters, this is the, the blue house, the little blue house, okay? There's another quarters right here. This lot is rated multi. This lot is rated single.
I thought, what did you say? You said that you had two lots, one was rated for two and one was rated for one?
Correct.
And you had combined, if that's what I didn't.
I bought both lots. But they, they are not combined on the tax roll, they're combined for my business. On the tax roll, they're separate lots.
There's, legally, on the ordinance, they're separate lots.
They're separate lots on zones and taxes and, and ownership. I've combined them, I mean, I own both of them and they touch each other.
But you have gone any, just through any process of combining them, so it's just one single?
I have not. I don't believe that's necessary.
All right, so we had a motion made. Can I get a second?
Second.
We're not, we're not going by the, the book, I mean, I thought we had to go by our book.
I think we have to make, I think we have to make a ruling on this all. That's what I think we have to, but I'm, I'm not a lawyer, so. Well, attorney, so.
Is that not something we need an attorney to tell us?
No, because your, your book specifically says that only one dwelling per lot, and it's pretty well cut and dried that. Now, where, where the, the variance he's actually needing is that the way the lots run, they run north and south. And the one house is sitting on one lot by itself, basically, the one adjacent to the street. The one that's sitting behind the tiny house is sitting on two lots.
It straddles the line.
Yeah, it straddles the line, just like the tiny house did. So somewhere in the shuffle, when they allowed the tiny house there to go first time, it was against the code because it straddled two lots.
No, that's not correct. The time, the first tiny house is on its lot by itself. It is a multifamily zone lot.
It's not those multifamily zone. It is not, not according to the zoning maps that we have. Neither one of those lots.
I understand.
So I, I came four times and asked. You were not able to tell me. You sent me to the school tax office.
I did not send you to the school tax.
You absolutely did.
I did not.
I have the school tax.
I understand what you have, but what the instructions I gave you were to go to the planning and zoning commission.
That's not correct. You sent me to the tax office to find out how this, um.
I'm not original. I'm still confused. You have two lots, one is on for two, and one is on for one.
One is on for multi.
Multi, which is absolutely, one, multi, and one is on for one. You've got one of, and the one you have is on the one lot.
Let me see, the, the, I, no, no, the, you got, the school says it's multi-zone, right? Is that what you're saying?
The school says the tiny house. The Russian house
Uh huh.
is on multifamily, uh, single family, one home. The other lot that was vacant is on multi.
From the school, though, that's what you're saying?
I'm going off my tax report, which is what he sent me to look at to get my zoning. He couldn't tell me the zoning.
That's not true. That is absolutely not true. I don't understand, if it was originally multi, if you put one on.
Hey, just, just a minute, that's one time. What's the question?
It was, it was originally zoned for multi?
One lot was zoned for single, one lot was zoned for multi. I own both lots.
I understand that, but, but the, 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 the Russian house is on, which one of those two lots?
The one that's on single.
Okay, and you have another lot?
According to the school, I don't know how I'm zoned, if this is not correct. David, you'll have to tell me how I'm zoned, because I have no idea.
I don't know where the school got their zoning, but they did not get it off the zoning map.
So here's a question. Doesn't the county have ultimate authority as far as zoning?
Welling per lot.
You can grant a variance if you like, yes. You have.
Then why are we arguing?
One house.
Then why are we arguing? Because if you're gonna do it for one, you need to do it for all.
Everybody's talking. He, you know, a couple, you know, he's the, he's the zoning representative, I think we ought to get his.
Stanley, come up here where I can hear you, brother. Just come up here, I, I can't hear myself.
Well, it was in the handbook, always, I just saw the handbook, and the handbook said one dwelling per lot, that's what it said. So that means if you got two lots, you have two houses, not anymore. Or not any, you know, I mean, that's just the way that book said. So I went by that and I voted against it. How y'all vote is y'all's business and nothing against you, that's just what the book said. We're gonna follow the rules of the book, that's what it says.
I'm asking for a variance to come in.
Yeah.
That's what I'm asking.
That's what he's asking.
I understand, but I, I still have a question. You said it was, you have one lot, you know, it's one. It really doesn't. Let's just say, let's say, you know, it's, it's on for, one house, if you got one house on it. I don't know where they got that, I understand. Because.
That's, that's the zoning, that's A one and C one.
There is no A one zoning, that's what I don't understand. I don't know why the school's giving out anything like that because they don't have the authority to zone your properties. You've got a zoning ordinance, you got a zoning map.
Where is the zoning map?
Hanging on my wall in there.
Original? All right, hold on, hold on, hey. Hey, we're getting out of, we're, we're.
Anyway, it just seems.
I got what you're saying, give me just a minute here, okay? I, I, I see what the problem is, and I can't vote anyway, because Stephen and I are second cousins, so. Yeah, well, if it come down to a tie, so. We're second cousins, and I believe that that falls underneath the, I believe, nepotism. So the question is, and the, and the rule, what we're asking, or what was put on the agenda, is to ask for a variance to the rule be, because it's the way I understand it, correct me if I'm wrong, crew quarters, number one, not housing. Number two, you're right across the street from an industrial area, like you're industrial and you're here. And what you're wanting to do is have a variance for your lot to put the multifamily house, which you believe, according to this, is multifamily and single family. And the city has a conflict between our map and the school's map. So what was, what was brought before the council was to consider a variance, which would allow you to put crew quarters and leave it there, and basically swap, like you're saying, swap.
Yeah, I don't, I don't allow the zones, I don't know what I'm asking for now. It's, it's a variance from, what it amounts to, it's a variance in the way the, the zoning ordinance is written.
Okay, so we had a motion for a variance, we had a second, and at this time, we're gonna call for a vote. I can't get my question answered. Absolutely. Well, I'm sorry, what was your question?
Well, it seems to me, if I, to simplify, you have two lots, one is rated multi, one is rated single.
That's what I believe.
And, and the one that's rated single has got the, it's got the Russian house on it.
Correct.
So why don't you put, no, don't here, why don't you put the two you wanna put on the multi?
No, I can answer that question. It's pure aesthetics. They look better, they're more symmetrical, the one that's facing east and west blocks the view of the old barracks building. It, it looks better.
I'm gonna have to agree with that. Going down the street, it does look better.
It would plumb better, it would electrify easier, it would plumb easier, it would drive away easier. That's, that's. That's, that's the reason.
The reason I recommended that you grant the variance is because I don't understand where the school board is getting, telling him one thing and, and our ordinance says something different. Because he was acting under what he thought to be the best way to do it by what he got from school board or school district. And it does not comply with what the city ordinance says. So there was a, there was a miscommunication there. I don't, there is no zone A one in the city reference books. There is no zoning A one. Now, I don't know where the school gets their A one, but ours is R one, R two, R three, commercial, uh, lot, industrial, heavy industrial, just like normal. I don't know what this A bid says.
Can I want to ask one question? I'm sorry, John Curtis, is not the proper way to do this if we're gonna give a variance to consult the neighbors?
You do. If, if we pass the variance.
Yeah, if you pass the variance, we have to send out a letter to everybody within two hundred feet of the property.
I thought that was done before we.
No, it's after, after it's, after it's something done, because if you send all that out, everybody does their thing and then you turn it down, it's all.
Okay, so how, how does that work? If we grant variance today, it's, we're gonna go ask all the neighbors? What if they say nah? Then, then what happens?
Then y'all decide one way or the other after that, again, basically.
Go ahead, Miss O'Meara.
Okay, I was told that there, are they gonna be living in it or are they just gonna stay there to do the laundry and stuff?
They're gonna, I, I mean, they drive trucks. They come and go. They may stay there every other night. They may stay there for two to, two or three nights in a row or a week in a row.
Because I wasn't, I was under, understanding that they were just gonna be there like to do their laundry and then they were gonna go.
No, they're there just to do their laundry.
I don't, I don't.
They can take a nap in there all day long, but they stay overnight.
I could do, I could do that with no, no variance. I'm asking for a variance so that I can do it correctly.
Alright, so we had the motion made and seconded. If this comes down to a tie, then I believe, because we are second, not third, correct? Second cousins, I have to abstain. And by the rules, you will then be the tiebreaker, if it comes down to that. So, just so we know, that I'm abstaining from the vote. Am I correct? Shane?
Yeah. I, I have another question. So we give this variance for a crew quarters. And he decides he wants to rent it out to the solar people or the windmill people or whatever. This variance does not apply to him anymore. Is that, am I correct? I mean, is it gonna be rental property or is it gonna be crew quarters?
Reproaching.
Depends on how y'all worded in your, in your motion. It could be either way.
But he's, he's coming for a variance for crew quarters.
Then that's what your, that, that's what your variance would be for.
Who, who made the motion? Would you make the motion?
So I make a motion that your property at eleven oh eight west third have a variance granted for the utilization of three tiny houses for crew quarters.
Alright. It was seconded and made. At this time, we're gonna call for a vote. All in favor, say aye. So I got five, correct? One, two, three, four, five? Right?
Right.
Opposed? Eyes have it.
Okay, then we will send out the notices.
I have another question. So will I be notified once the approval actually given?
Yes.
Yes, thank you.
Alright, so.
Ask a quick question. Who goes and asks the neighbors?
We sent it out, we sent it out.
Cause I'm keeping you a list right here of what you're supposed to read.
I'm gonna send the letters out.
Two hundred.
Two hundred feet.
In two hundred feet of that house is that you're looking at, uh, state, uh, Sandy McAlister, the name of our neighbor.
Yeah, it's not gonna be very many because you own the property on the other side of it, so.
I just gotta say, we need to have a party.
Alright, at this time, we're gonna go, uh, item number ten, which is to consider and approve the tax-free Voyager fleet card for the city. So basically, the In, Indian Red Voyager Fleet Card Program offers tax-exempt options for qualifying government and nonprofit fleets and works with organizations to recover taxes on fuel purchases. It doesn't remove taxes, but allows qualified entities to build net of applicable fuel taxes, which are then recovered. To determine eligibility and participate, a valid tax-exempt certification is required with the application and the company needs to be a member of a specific program that offers the tax exemption. To my understanding, and I did not get this from the judge, I've got, I've asked multiple people.
I'm sorry, go ahead.
Oh, to my understanding, the way that this, this goes is because we are a city, we are qualified. I believe that the county uses it and I believe that the school is now using it. And it will allow the city to buy fuel at other places. And it will allow us to recoup some of the tax back. So with that being said, even if we approve it, we have to be approved by fleet card. It's not a done deal. It's not like tonight, we approve it, tomorrow, everybody has a card. Uh, I think that there needs to be a limitation on the cards. Would you say one or two cards, right?
Yeah.
Come sign the card out.
I don't think everybody needs one, so.
So, the policy's not set. We haven't anything. We're just asking that we can go ahead and fill out the applications to do this. And basically, we believe that it's going to save us money in the long run because of the tax exemptions and stuff like that, so. I can't promise you that it does. I just know that, that the county and them, and that's why they win it. And it will allow them.
It's a better governing than what we're, what we're spending, how we, what we have now.
Yes. Okay.
So I move to implement the tax-free Voyager fleet card for the city at Quanah.
Motion was made. Can I get a second?
I second.
Second it?
Like, city second?
Uh, uh, Brownlow. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Eyes have it? Alright, number eleven. Consider approve a deadline date for enforcing zoning property ordinances, December first, twenty twenty-five, or January first, twenty twenty-six, and appointing two new planning and zoning board members. So, Mr. Wilson, and I talked about this, he has a lot of, um, he's been doing a lot of research on, on everything, and he believes, correct me if I'm wrong, to just go ahead and rip the Band-Aid off and shoot for December the first and get everything sent out and under the, under the, um.
We've got about twelve letters right now to send to property owners. We have to, uh, establish an owner of record to send the letters to. Tell them they're in violation of the zoning ordinance or whichever ordinance they're in violation of, and there's considerable. A lot of it is zoning. They're doing things in residential districts that are not allowed in residential districts. It should be done in industrial and light industrial and commercial. But they have, over the years, it has fallen through the cracks and things that are being done in residential areas that are not, that they're against the code. And it's against the code that we have that's been on the books for several years and was re, reevaluated in two thousand twenty-one. And some wording changes and pictures were put in it, but basically the, the, the same ordinance that was drafted back in eight, in nineteen ninety-eight is pretty much intact like it was, with the exception of some pictures dealing with, uh, corner locks and obstructions of view and things like that, but the, but the wording of the ordinance is almost exactly identical. Cause I've gone through it from cover to cover. And we've got a, 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 an extensive use schedule in there. What can be put into a residential, what cannot be put in a residential, what can be put in commercial. You can zone up, but you can't zone down. You can't build a, a tire factory in a residential, but you can build a house in an industrial area. That's just the way the law right reads. But we've got dozens, more than one handful of ordinance violations of junk cars, junk tires, junk, junk, junk RVs, weeds this high. And we've got to determine who the individual owner is so we can send these letters out. We've got, we have the, the form letters sent, that you send it to me, I'm in violation of ordinance number such and such, section such and such and such. You've got ten days to make the correction, or you will be fined. And if they don't do it, we find them, and if they still don't do it, then we do it and we put a tax lien on the property.
Okay, I got something to ask you.
Okay.
Okay, the zoning deal, there's something I wanted to bring up on the other deal. There was another deal we were supposed to talk about, wasn't it? The coffee place?
To what?
The coffee place, did Stanley and him talk about two of them that night?
There was, but that item, for some reason, the P and Z didn't bring the. The, the, the coffee house and the, and the, uh, snow cone stand is in violation, the same way that, well, it's in violation of the zoning ordinance dealing with, uh, home occupations. A home occupation, you can have a home occupation in your house. You live in that house. You have a, a sewing machine place where you sew shirts. You can allow one, one square foot sign on the, at the exterior showing that you're there. You cannot have an unusual traffic pattern through there, cars driving in and out. And you, it has to be done by the person that's living in the house. And the snow cone stand and the little coffee shop is in violation of that part of the zoning ordinance.
Uh, let me ask you a question real quick. Was I, I didn't get that. Was I supposed to put this in here?
Well, they, uh, we, we were and we were not. It was a, we were waiting for Charlie to bring the report that the P and Z made, so we put it on the agenda and we didn't get it, so we didn't get it on there.
Are y'all okay with this?
Get his on there if you couldn't get his.
Are you okay with this? So we have this?
We got, we got a, we got the recommendation.
Are you okay with this? Cause we can, we can fix this real quick. If you're okay with this, if, if you're okay with this and the council's okay with this, we have November the eighteenth. I have one thing already to put on the agenda that I dropped the ball on. We will put them on the agenda. It's a special session. It's gonna be a special session, but we will put her, we will put her on the special session for that, because it got left off here. We can't go right in here and fix it. I could, we can't fix it right now. But I can fix it in, what, two, that, two weeks? Is that two weeks? A week?
Seems like there's a lot of things that get forgotten.
Is that?
I won't be here this morning. I'll be at work.
And I'll be at work if, if, I mean.
It's a morning meeting?
Yeah, it's ten AM.
I'll be at work. After your council's gonna have jobs and I'll be here.
Can we even hear what she has to say or is that because it's not on the agenda?
We can't hear what she's got to say, but we can fix it. I mean, we can't fix it tonight, but I can fix it. It wasn't intentionally left off. We can make, we will. We didn't get the re.
We, we didn't get a report from the P and Z that night after we had our lengthy conversation.
And I'm not, we're not trying to throw anybody under the bus. We, we're changing. So what, the, the recommendation that we made to the P and Z was to make one week prior to the. Yeah.
Well, the only person with P and Z that seems to be doing anything is, is here, so we need to revisit the, the members of this to me, of this.
We got that on here, so. I, I.
Next time.
I'm breaking so many rules right now.
You got the, you got the first one? He gave you a list for the first one, but not the second one?
I don't know why I didn't. I don't know why I didn't get on there. Charlie didn't give me nothing.
Oh, so he didn't give you the first one? Then why did it go?
I put it on persistent. We, look, we, we, I, I, we can fix this right now. I, we dropped the ball. You're not being, you're not being swept under the rug. You're not, there's nothing, and I will ensure that you are on the next one that we can put you on. You'll be on there and we'll, we'll make this right for your, it, it was not intentional. I didn't, it just, you got swept under the rug. All I.
There's no legal way we could make the exception.
No.
Cause we screwed up and she, and she's big.
Hey, it, I, I, it's all me. I'm, I'm taking a hundred percent. It was Glenn tall, made a mistake, but I'm gonna make it right to you. I'll reach out. We'll have you on the next agenda and we will bring, you'll have the same chance that they had. I can't let you speak. I can't, if you had a spec, if you had spoken on a four-minute time, if, we could have, we would have heard what you had to say. But I, I can tell you right now that you were not left off the agenda intentionally. It didn't happen and.
As far as like, if I would have spoke in four minutes before, we'd have changed.
No, but, no, well, it would have brought it to our attention where we could try to make it right prior, you know, thirty minutes.
Tonight, us having a yes or no answer whether, like, with the dates.
I think.
December first or January first.
We hadn't got there yet. I mean, we hadn't got there yet.
Can't you move to add a motion to add it in the meeting?
I can't. It has, by Texas state law, it had to been posted that, within the, the legal amount of hours. Because if we could do that, we could te, theoretically, we could slide anything in and, and hide it from the public if nobody showed up. That's, that's one.
Since this falls under zoning, and it is, it is a, a, I, I'm not, I'm, just stay with me for a second. Can I ask her a question?
I will allow it since we screwed up. Go ahead.
I wanna know what your, what your concern is. Do you think we're gonna shut you down by December first? Is that what you're, because aren't you moving?
Yes, I'm in the process of getting a building here in town that is industrial.
Yes.
Property to do it the right way. From the beginning, we wanted to do it the right way. A lot of miscommunication from both ends, whatever. But as far as being shut down, December the first or January the first pushes me back. Because if it is January, if it is December the first, excuse me, and this building is not ready for me to move in, that is.
That's what I was, what I thought you were saying. Okay.
What the December the first and January the first is, is to start the process of me sending out these notices to people that are in violation. It's, it's not, well, you'll get a letter, just like the rest of them.
Okay, but, but she can't move a business in ten days.
I'm not, I'm not gonna shut her down in ten days. That's not what the letter's all about.
Okay, so is there different, okay, so move your garden in ten days, but don't move your business in ten days. There's different, there's different timeframes. Okay.
Hold on, hold on, hold on, hold on. Hold, hold on, ma'am. Please say what you, what was the question? Cause I wanna make sure when we leave here that we're all on the same page and that, that you feel like that you're, that you were not singled out.
I understand where the problem is here. I'm just saying, so if it is December the first and that's the job load on.
So if, if, what I believe he's saying is, what this is, is we're gonna send the notices out that you are in, not you, anybody's in violation. That, that you're not shut down, and, and no fines, nothing, correct?
No.
It's just so that we can get you in.
Compliance.
Compliance.
Can I ask one question to her? To her?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, whenever you put your business in, who did you go contact with, um, to do all this?
From the beginning, I'm not from here. I don't know. So the one person that I do know that has.
We can't, we can't do that. I.
Okay, that's fine.
You can say position.
She didn't tell me.
Not, he's not, it's before your time, before your time.
Before my time, yeah.
The position of the person you talked to, you can say that.
Um, let me see, the chamber?
Yeah.
Okay, who? Chamber?
Right, so.
And she told you, they told you you could put it there?
We were not informed the steps the right way. And we contacted the water company to get power and water and everything turned on there. They said that we could not do it until we went through this. The water got turned on, so let's assume it that we are.
So the city turned your water on?
Yes.
Okay. Alright, we, we, we dropped the ball, but we're gonna make it right. And, and this letter's not gonna shut you down. You're already in the process of moving. I will make sure you're on the agenda for the next go-round.
What, what the, what the dates, uh, December one and January one represent is, we've got to start somewhere. We've got to start sending out these letters, trying to get this place cleaned up, trying to get these violations that have been rampant for years, and it's just. And it's just a starting point. I mean, we've got the authority to do it, we're gonna, we could start in the morning if we wanted to. But what we're trying to do is let everyone know that as of December the first, we're gonna start sending these letters out. You're gonna be cited for being in violation. And we're going to enforce these ordinances that we've got and had for years that never were enforced. And that's, that's what those two days represent and-
I, I think she's just needs some reassurance that, that, it, it, this is what I'm hearing, that she needs some reassurance that on December first or January first for that matter, she won't be shut down, ran out of pounds, she's not-
She will not be. That's, that's, she can have my assurance on that.
Okay, all right, so to continue with this and I, we, well, we danced along the rules on that one, but hey, if you feel better about it, then we're gonna, we're, we're gonna feel better about it too, so. I apologize that I, that, that we dropped the ball on that, but we, we'll dance around it, we'll make it right. So, uh, the rest of that is, the first portion of, of the, uh-
Can I make a motion on the first part?
Yes.
I move that we put a letter in the paper and on our Facebook page, January the first, of what is coming. And we start sending letters January the fifteenth.
Okay. So, the motion was made, January first, letters go out on the fifteenth. Motion, oh, we lost our note taker.
I'm right here. January first, um, pre-warned.
Notice in the paper and on our Facebook and get the news out somehow, however we're gonna get the news out.
Start sending letters January fifteenth, yes.
All right, motion was made and seconded, we got it up here. But it was made by Mr. Jackson, seconded by Ms. Brownlow. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes have it. On the second portion. Mr. Wilson and I were talking and we got together and, standing still here? So the zoning board is two members short and my personal opinion is the days of-
You can't have a opinion.
Okay, my personal thought is, my personal thought is, the reason we, we did it this way, and y'all, y'all can change it, that's why I wanted to explain it here. The, the, the thought is, five board member, five board?
Yeah, the zoning ordinance, the zoning ordinance requires five members.
Three have been there for how long?
Long time.
So they've been there, three have been there for a long time. And I think everybody's wanting to pass the, um, pass the, uh, or, not pass, but comply with the ordinances that we have. So we came up with two nominees and I will let y'all read over what your thought on that.
Why, why was Becky Parker not put, we?
I don't know.
Where, where, where did we come up with these nominees at?
Uh, Mr. Wilson and I have said in his office, he said he needed to come up with two and I came up with two people that were outside.
I don't know why we're not handling this the way we did the nominations for, 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 for the, uh, for us, where we-
We're gonna do that on every board?
Well, I think, I think this is very-
No, 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 not, not just that. Are you gonna do that on every board?
It was no, no one was put on or left off intentionally. I mean, we didn't, if, if y'all want to, we can say, put on a webpage or whatever, or second-
But wait a minute, are we gonna do, look, I, I, I can't put anybody on a board, he can't put anybody on a board. We put them on a board. My question to you is, are we going to put every board that we have, are we gonna require applications?
No, I don't think so, but I think this is, I think this, I'm just now hearing that we've had this two people and, and, and the decisions were made before it even comes up here on who to put it.
You're voting on the decision, there's no decision made.
Well, I mean-
I think we need to have more. I think we need to have more.
Chill, I'm gonna give you a Xanax.
No, don't do that because I'll be gone for three weeks.
To take away any ambiguity or any claims of favoritism or people being left out, why don't we put something on our Facebook page, on our website and ask for community people that want to express an interest in being on the board? And then based on the names we get from that, we can weed them out based on if they own a business, you know what I'm saying?
We're gonna do this on every board, that, we, we, we're gonna set the standard, let's set it.
All right, but here's the thing.
As far as we've done two boards like this.
Huh?
This is the second time we've ever been facing this and that's how we've done it.
So, my thought is, when, when you're putting people on boards or on councils, you want to, A, make sure that they are going to be committed and truly interested in serving on that particular board. And then when they express that interest, then you just have a list of names to narrow down. We've thrown two names out here, one of them I know, one of them I don't, right? So I'd be hesitant to approve one and not the other.
And here's, here's, um, I'm sorry to interrupt you.
Your favorites?
Um, I wanna sell better if there were, if, if there were two positions and three names for us to look at. Because then we have a little bit of, um, a little, I'm just gonna be a little spooky. Okay, you've got three members on there that are men, you got two more men, where's a woman on this board?
Yeah, you need to have some women on there, surely.
Let me, let me add-
Hold on.
Let me add something else in the mix. The, going back to the book, book says there'll be five members. And three of them will go on to the board on January the fifteenth of odd numbered years. Two of them will go on the board on January the fifteenth on even numbered years. And each one of them will be numbered one, two, three, four, five. So you take the three odd ones and they go off on certain, what the January the fifteenth has, I have no idea, that's just what the book says. So, if you do point these two or whenever you appoint two, two of them are gonna go off in next January the fifteenth. So they would have to be replaced in January. Then the other three that are numbered one, three, five would go off on the next January the fifteenth of, of, uh-
So you have a rolling board.
I think, I think, I think the best thing to do to satisfy everybody, we'll do it like you said, or everyone said, we'll put it out.
And that's, that's fine.
That that's up, but, uh, I mean, that's gonna have to be the standard.
And I can tell you the reason why.
We can't pick what boards we do.
No, but and that's kind of the way it should be if you wanna add true, true interest.
But given the fact that we had the meeting that we had with the PNC the last time, what should've taken fifteen minutes took three hours. And, and I'll just tell you, they said, did it make any difference whether they were in the book or not? They were gonna vote their way, whether, no matter what the book said.
Kinda sounds like you need a holding board then.
Huh?
Kinda sounds like you need a holding board.
That's what it sounds like to me.
I don't disagree.
All right, so, that's fine. Motion, we're not gonna, so let's, we can work with what we got here. So let's make a motion that because of the way that it reads, let me make sure that I'm reading this right. Appointing two new planning and zoning board members. So we will make a motion that we will take applications for two? Are we on the same page, two right now, right? Two?
Two for now, I mean, you're gonna have to do more. January.
Yeah, there'll be two more.
I don't know that we necessarily wanna take applications, we just want expressions of interest.
Right.
I mean, you're not gonna have somebody to fit-
Word, word to motion.
I make a motion that we post a notice requesting individuals to express interest to serve on the PNC committee.
Motion was made by Ms. Brownlow, can I get a second?
And who they make the motion, or who they, who they're gonna tell their interest to?
Well, they'll, they'll, I mean, it would-
Once they, once, if, if, once they, they need to tell us, you know, hey, I would like to be on the PNC, then we'll put them on the agenda like this is.
All right.
If gotta, if we wanna-
Will they contact City Hall to do it?
Yeah.
Okay, be able to make you happy. I make a motion that we post a notice requesting interest in individuals to serve on the PNC board that they notify City Hall and let David Wilson know if they're interested.
Otherwise, it's gonna be notifying me or you or-
You got it?
Yeah.
Motion was made, can I get a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Lisa, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes have it? All right. Now, y'all are gonna bear with me, it's gonna make you mad for thirteen seconds, but give me fourteen seconds and I'm gonna tell you the way around it. Just give me, just bear with me. All right, so, page?
You coming out of twelve?
Yes, so page four.
Well, I have twelve, I went from eleven to fourteen.
No, 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 this is page four of the rule. All right, bear with me, don't have a, don't have a heart attack over here, hear me out. And then you, you, you've got a way out, so. No item shall be included on the agenda at the request of a council member unless a request to include the same item has been made by two members of the council to mayor, unless time does not allow for it during the meeting, mayor or him. We need, we're gonna go in there and change that. We didn't, we didn't catch it on the first one, but I made the ones that you said, but we're fixing to make this one right here. Okay, yeah, okay. It, you did catch one, we, we just saw this one. Unless time does not allow for it during the meeting, such requests shall be limited to two items per council member and supporting documentation compiled by the council member shall be provided by five PM, five days before the meeting. Each council member is responsible for being prepared to attend meetings and discuss items on the agenda. So by providing the documentation, we have a chance to look at what, what we're voting on. Okay, so at this time is when I'm gonna tell you that, that was illegal and I'm scratching it. Bear with me because if you change the page here, here's where you come back with a balance of power. And any council member may appeal to the council as a whole, a ruling by the mayor. If the appeal is seconded by any of you, the person making the appeal may make a brief statement and the mayor may explain his or her position. The mayor will then put to the ruling a vote to the council. So I'm striking it from the record because it wasn't done in accordance with the rules. However, with a balance of power, I'm giving you the balance. So, what would you like to do from here?
Wait, I didn't understand that.
So, the supporting documentation, so-
Which, which one we talking?
So here, so for us to make a, for us to make a, the decision on changing the name of the ballroom, you would provide us with why you want to do that, okay? Then we all have time to see why you want to do that. But it doesn't mean that, it's anything. If you come, if any council member puts anything on the deal, you have to provide the supporting documentation, just like we, like I provided the supporting documentation for this. So at this time, it wasn't done in accordance with the rules, but I'm giving you the rule right here. It says how you go tell me, hey, Mr. Mayor, I didn't do that, but we're going to bring it, take your ruling away and put it back onto the agenda. We just have to do it by the rules, I'm not trying to take you off the agenda. I'm just telling you how to do it. When you provide stuff to the agenda, you have to give us the supporting documentation so that we, everyone has a chance to see why it's on there. And we're, just like any of this in here had documentation and we could study it. So now, you're going to make, you're going to appeal to the council. And if the appeal is seconded, the person making the appeal may make a brief statement and the mayor may explain his or her position. So you say, why you want that on there? Why you wanna change the name of the ballroom? This is where you make your appeal.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna, I'm gonna-
I'll make the appeal.
Yes.
Uh, the reason that I want to make the appeal is because we need to change the name of the ballroom to a convention center so we can take the funds that are going to another organization and put them forward, supporting the ballroom.
Okay, simple enough. So there's the appeal, can I get a second on the appeal?
I'll second it.
The second was made?
We all wanted.
All right, so the, if the motion was made and, and it was seconded, so we're gonna put it back on the agenda. All right, we got a call for a vote, give a second, all in favor of putting it back on the agenda, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes have it. Just stick with me long enough.
I know, I know, I was trying to, okay? And that's exactly the way I understand it should be done too.
I said, just stick with me long enough.
All right.
All right, so, if you're bringing, if you're bringing items put on the agenda, if you, if you'll bring the supporting documentation, then we can put it on here, she has a chance to look at it, everybody has a chance to look at it. So, at this time, it's back on the agenda. The motion is, consider approving changing the name of the Three Rivers Ballroom to the Quanet Ballroom Convention Center. All right, here's where we discuss this. It was brought to my attention by a donation and I wish the guy was in here who we could, can we, we can say an, an organization, right? Okay. Uh, there's a mason that believes that the money that was donated to that and the way that it was worded, that we cannot change the name of the ballroom. So at this, I would say, instead of tabling it, killing it, letting it die, we would have to research, was half a million, two hundred fifty thousand?
Something like that, yeah, I don't know what the exact figure is.
And see if we're gonna have to reimburse that. I don't know.
It was before my e-law.
Yeah, it was before my time.
And two, you can go back and see when the donation was made and if there is any stipulation was when they made it.
What are we doing about lawyers? What do we, what do we, do we have anybody anywhere, anybody in the audience, so a lawyer, I mean, we need a lawyer.
See, you spending money on volunteer law schools now.
I mean, this is, it just seems like it's agenda item after agenda item.
Let me ask this, can we go ahead and change the name legally? Can we change it right now, like, like it's on here? And if, if that is an issue, then we'll call emergency session, change it back? I don't know, I'm asking.
We have somebody, we have to have convention center in the name to be able to use those funds to keep that building. It's gonna bankrupt us if we don't keep on it.
I don't disagree.
So is the, is the objection to changing it to the Quanet Ballroom Convention Center from the Three Rivers Ballroom? Because if that's the only, if that is the only objection in order to meet the-
The goal then?
The agreement, just make it the Three Rivers Ballroom and Convention Center.
Sure.
Three Rivers Ballroom and Convention Center.
Convention Center, does that care? As long as we can get that money.
If it has integrity on it to keep the money, if irony on it to-
Take money away from who?
I think you probably, when you look, when you find it, whoever made it-
It's not being spent the way it's supposed to be. It's, it's, this report, you're fixing to get it.
I think when you just research the ordinance, you're gonna find that whoever, that, that's the issue. When they made the donation, they said to the baller, basically, that's it. They didn't stipulate a name per se and we're trying to change that ballroom to something else. And they're like, right, yeah, but if you put, I, I'm with y'all. I think you're with well in it.
If you, if you called, if you called it in, in this, this could be something that, you know, I guess this is more, we could decide on that later. What if it was the Quanet Three Rivers Ballroom and Convention Center?
That's it, that's what I was saying, that would work. I think you're gonna have no problem.
That makes everybody happy.
Yeah, I think, I think the, the big rub was taking the Three Rivers part of it out.
I don't think that, I, I don't know what it was, I was just told when this came out, I was, I had two phone calls from people that were, I don't know, man, I, from the, the donations, that, that, that might be a problem, so.
Well, um, we, and I, and I, I would just suggest that instead of calling it the Quanet Three Rivers Ballroom Convention Center, call it the Ballroom and Convention Center.
I think that's right.
I separate it from- I, I don't think, I think it's got to be a convention center.
And nothing else?
I think it's got to say convention.
But it's con- aside for any pensions and use it for weddings.
Then, then it sounds to me like we have to have a-
You got one time to be the wording right.
To decide that, cause that's just what attorneys do. To decide that, because that's just what attorneys do. I got good night's sleep, I think.
Well, I'm not.
And good afternoon's sleep.
Just call it the Three Rivers Convention Center.
Yeah. Three Rivers Convention Center.
It doesn't make any difference. Um, if it says convention center, I don't care what it says.
Uh, we just.
Well, you can vote on it and amend it.
But.
At the end of the day. Motion's are amended, are amended.
Amended, as long as we bring it back to the table at the next meeting. Yeah, you can vote on it and amend it. You can vote on it to put like that and amend it to say this, 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 and this. It doesn't have to be set in stone right now. I mean, unless you're gonna chisel it out before the eighteenth. So what if we do a motion to temporarily change it to?
Why don't we just take it?
I'm, I'm here. I'm working with you. I, I'm, whatever you, I just.
If we could just find out what the rub is in the, in the name, knowing later that they're complaining about.
Yeah.
Do they want the Three Rivers part of it in there? Do they want the Ballroom part of it in there? Narrow it down to that and then find a happy compromise in the middle where everybody comes out. At this point, from, from the way he's talking and what we're discussing, it's the main one.
The term convention center is defined to include civic centers, auditorium, exhibit halls, and college stadiums that are owned by the city or other governmental entity that are managed in whole or in part by the city.
Make the motion. That's what we're gonna go with. However, you want to handle it. I'm trying to.
How, how do they, I mean, how do they want it? I mean, I don't care as long as it says convention, the term convention center.
So let's just table it till the next meeting and give him time to contact the masons or whoever the, the grant people were.
I'll, I'll contact them.
Figure out what, what their be.
This one want to put on the next special session?
It'll be the next meeting.
Very next meeting.
Well, that sounds like there's gonna be a quorum, but they.
Well, there could be.
Oh, yeah.
He's not a voting member.
If it required, he, it, that's still a quarrel. It still counts toward.
It's quarrel. Why, why do you say that? I should ask you.
Uh, he still counts toward a quarrel.
Yeah, okay. That's what I think.
Okay, I move that we table this until the next meeting to get the name definition, however they want it, as long as it has convention center in it.
I see.
So motion was made, seconded. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes have it.
I just gotta make one comment. I thought this was gonna be the simplest thing we had dressed today.
So just, when, when you put stuff on the agenda, just bring the documentation. I, I just, I mean, we made it work. I, I, I tried to work with everybody.